Five musketeers, right again.
Hello.
Good evening, this is the August twenty-seventh meeting of the zoning board of appeals. First up is a reserve decision. The appeal of an net renter. Twenty-six Pirate Street. Riverhead, New York. From chapter three oh one, section eleven, where existing lot is seven hundred and five thousand square feet. Minimum lot size required is forty thousand. Where existing lot is seventy-five feet and minimum required is one fifty. Where proposed front yard setback is twenty-six feet and minimum is fifty. Where proposed side yard setback is seventeen point nine and minimum required is twenty-five. Where proposed side yard is thirty-seven point nine and minimum is fifty-five. Where proposed yard setback is thirty and minimum is sixty. Where proposed imperious coverage is nineteen point four percent and the maximum is fifteen percent. Be granted with following conditions. The applicant is required to plant four green giant abreviady trees. As set forth in the attached plan to provide screening and privacy between the applicant's property and the neighboring property located at twenty Pirate Street.
Twenty-six.
Excuse me, it says twenty here.
Mine says twenty.
That's the next door neighbor. These green giant abreviades will be installed and inspected prior to the issuance of the applicant's certificate of occupancy. The applicant agrees to replace these plantings for two years following the issuance of certificate of occupancy should the trees not survive for whatever reason. It shall be granted in accordance with the applications, sketches, and amendments there too, if any, as filed with the building inspector. I move the appeal of... Oh God, we got it mixed up here.
Yeah, I don't, I don't...
Well, anyway. Be granted in accordance with the applications and sketches and amendments there too, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Ms. Gazillo.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
And I vote aye. All right. Clarissa, you're on.
(inaudible) twenty 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 two oh four Maple Avenue LLC, two oh four Maple Avenue, Riverhead. Tax map number six hundred one twenty-nine two twenty-six, DC five zoning. For an interpretation of chapter three oh one, section one fifty-seven, where three family dwelling proposed and multi-family dwellings are not permitted.
Good evening. Charles Cuddy for the applicant. The applicant's with me, Bob Nelson, who's the member of the LLC. And I also have Fred Marsland and Gary Graziano, who made affidavits in connection with this application. I would like to start out by saying to you that we were a little bit surprised that the denial, based on the fact that it's not a multi-family area, because the denial doesn't say that you can have two families in this particular district. But perhaps more important, I'd like to look at the letter that was sent and its recreation from the building department that talks about nineteen eighty-nine, a two-story single-family dwelling. There was nothing in the file whatsoever for this particular site. And so somebody recreated a letter in nineteen eighty-nine. It's factually wrong. The people who are here can testify to that. But I'm surprised that that's part of your file. Because the inspector who signed it has just been here for a little over a year. And so I don't know how he got to nineteen eighty-nine. But more importantly, let's go to the positive side of it. We believe this site has been a three-family dwelling for more than fifty years. And Mr. Marsland and Mr. Graziano have indicated that their, their use of this building, with the use of this building by the tenants, has existed for more than thirty-five years. And they're here with me, they can answer questions. We have little doubt that this is a multi-family, three-family house and has been for many, many years. We have given you an assessment map that shows the family dwellings in that locale within five hundred foot radius of two oh four Maple Avenue. And you'll note on that map that there are at least three other three-family dwellings within five hundred feet of our site.
Mr. Cuddy?
Yes.
Mr. Leroy Barnes. Can you, can you tell me, how, how long has Bob Nelson owned this property?
He's owned it since twenty nineteen.
So when he bought it in, in twenty, two thousand nineteen, did he secure financing and get a letter of pre-existing use or he took it as is?
He took the building that way and immediately sought to get a three-family determination from the building inspector.
Okay. So he purchased it not knowing what the zoning was for, or I should say, not knowing what the existing use was.
No, I think...
But felt very comfortable thinking it was a three-family, so he went ahead and bought it.
Now, he saw that it was the three-family dwelling.
Right.
Was aware that it was a three-family, he's here to testify, but I can say that, that he actually was aware that it was a three-family dwelling.
Right.
And he looked physically at it.
And that's fine, I, I mean, I'm looking at the letter dated October thirty-first nineteen eighty-nine. I don't know who would go in and alter that and make that kind of change and then put reconstructed ten-three-two nineteen. What was reconstructed, the building or the letter?
The letter was reconstructed. There was no letter in the file. This was something that was made up after the fact.
So if you research all the town records, the assessors' office have it as a three-family?
There's no, there are no records available. Unfortunately, these are records that apparently were consumed in the fire.
So, uh-oh, sorry. So anyway, so the assessors must have a record that it states it's a three-family or a multi-family, correct?
The assessors, yes, and, and this map was made from the assessors. So that we went and looked, and this is what shows in the assessment office.
I mean, I have knowledge that people lived there for many years and, and as a multiple family. I don't question that at all. I don't know what the basis of the denial is from the building department. All it did was cite in the law that it's not a permitted use. They did not provide information as to why they determined it's not a three-family. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So they just give us a denial letter and say it's, it's a single family, it's not an allowed use. Based on what information did they determine it on?
I, I can't imagine, I don't know what information they had.
Exactly. So, so we have personal knowledge, myself, and you have clients or people that are representing that these pre-existing structure and uses existed prior to zoning and have, have until last year. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
So I saw the affidavit that Mr. Marsland signed, and you had another affidavit by, I believe, Jeff Zahn, is that true?
We have an affidavit from, yes, the, the architect. We also have one from the neighbor across the street, Mr. Graziano, who is here tonight.
All right, good. All right. That's all my questions.
All right, do we have anybody else on? Anybody in the weight room?
I'd be pleased if you want to.
So is, is there anybody on screen objecting to this, this determination to allow it to continue as a three-family? Do we have any objections?
Raise your hand.
Unmute yourself or raise your hand. It doesn't appear anybody objects to this staying as a three-family or we're going to give it an approval for a three-family, at least based on what I've seen.
All right, one last, one last time.
The gentleman in the bottom left corner? Can you ask him, because I thought, he may have raised his hand, but it was all camera.
He might be on another case.
Anybody wish to be heard, raise your hand.
Unmute your button, Keith.
Yeah, he's, he's raising his hand.
I don't see nothing.
I did. I'm here on another case.
Thank you.
All right. I shouldn't move my hand.
I saw a hand move.
Right now, sit on your hand.
Thank you.
Nobody else? All right, board.
I, I, I don't have any objections.
No objections, Ralph?
No objection.
No problem, Mr. Joe.
Nobody? Okay, everybody, who's got the call?
Is that me? I got Edwards.
Do you have...
I got it.
No.
Otto?
You have it? I got it.
Oh, okay, good.
We ready? I move that the appeal of two oh four Maple Avenue LLC, two oh four Maple Avenue, Riverhead, Suffolk County Tax Map Number six hundred dash one twenty-nine dash two dash twenty-six dash DC five zoning for interpretation of chapter three oh one, section one fifty-seven, where three-family dwelling proposed and multi-family dwelling are permitted, are not permitted, be granted in accordance with the applications and sketches with amendments there too, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
Second. All right. Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mr. Gazillo.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So your appeal's been granted, and Mr. Cuddy, you certainly know the procedures after this.
Yes, thank you, again.
All the best. Clarissa? Cock Clarissa. As I was...
L, L, L.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
X, N, X, N.
Silent L.
Silent L.
Appeal twenty twenty twenty-four Patricia Pancheck, Seventy Park Road, Riverhead. Tax map number six hundred sixteen three five RA forty zoning. For variance to send or relieve from chapter three oh one, section eleven, where proposed imperious surface coverage is forty-seven point eight percent and maximum allowed is fifteen percent. Where proposed side yard setback is seven point five feet and minimum required is ten feet. Where proposed front yard setback is twenty-two point nine feet and minimum required is fifty feet. And section nine, where proposed detached garage is five feet from rear and side property lines and minimum required is twenty feet.
All right, who do you have up there? One of the Panchecks?
Mr. DeLuca.
James DeLuca should be on the line somewhere.
Okay, let's bring him, Pete. Mr. DeLuca, undo yourself. Where are you?
That doesn't sound good.
I'm Keith Fowley, can you hear me?
Yes, hi Keith. Mr. DeLuca has to give his presentation first.
Okay.
All right.
Yes, sir.
Mr. DeLuca, can you hear us? You have to unmute your button. Are you there?
Yes, hello?
James?
Yes.
How are you, sir?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. DeLuca, if you kindly raise your right hand and you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth shall be gone.
I do.
State your name and your address.
Jim DeLuca, twelve Windelane East, Riverhead, New York.
All right, you have the floor, Mr. DeLuca.
Okay, basically, this occupant has an existing, a single-family dwelling, and he wants to put this, he wants to include the floor area on the first floor and add a second floor on it. And also, he wants to install a one-car garage in the rear yard. At present, there is no garage, although there is a garage under the house from the back which you can't get into because of the height of the, the foundation wall, so that's why he wants to put the garage as a detached garage. But as you can see, the property is pre-existing, not conforming, much smaller than required zoning at the present time, so we, to make entry into the garage feasible, we have to keep it five feet off each property line. And as you can see, it's a one-car garage with a little storage area, and it's one-story. And getting to the dwelling now, he wants to square off the first floor, which consists of a hundred and nineteen square feet, which makes the first floor now nine oh two square feet. And the second floor will lay directly over that envelope, which would be thirty-two point two by twenty-eight. The existing front yard is twenty-three point four, with the little addition on the side, the hundred and nineteen square foot addition. It'll be twenty-two point nine, which decreases it only by point five feet or half foot. Side yard at present, closest point is seven point five feet. When we put the hundred and ni, a hundred and nineteen square foot addition, that's actually eight feet, so it's at the shortest point, it's eight feet. So it's actually greater than the existing side yard. As you will note, in the back, it has a wooden deck on ground and it has a, a plastic shed. It's already been almost completely cleaned up, as you know, on the survey.
Yeah, I didn't see a deck, I think they removed it, correct, Jim?
Yeah, yeah, he, he's, he worked on the re... Basically, this house is going to be for a family member. I believe it's rented right now, the renter's leaving, and a family member's...
So what you're saying is that the, the owner, Patricia Pancheck?
Yes, yes.
They're going to fix it up for a family member?
Correct, it's the daughter, I believe.
Okay, so it's going to be their daughter's house? Or at least, let's say it is, for now. So it's going to be somebody living there that has a vested interest in it. One of the concerns that some people brought up was the drainage issues there. Is that something you'll be able to address in the design and work with the building inspector to make sure that the drainage is mitigated so it doesn't affect any of the neighboring properties?
You're talking about the drain because it slopes back.
I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Because the property slopes back.
Um, there was some concern about drainage, whether it's sloping north, to the south, or north, or east, or the west.
Yeah.
We just want to make sure it's maintained as the code requires that.
Yeah.
And that you, as the architect, will make sure that those provisions are in place when it's reconstructed, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
He happens to be in the road business anyway, in drainage, Mr. Pancheck.
I know the Pancheck family. I do know them, I'm aware of them. I don't know the daughter, but that's irrelevant. What you're asking for is basically to increase the overall lot coverage for the, for the garage itself. There are some concerns about it being five feet from the property line and the wall there, there's a block wall, but, but typically, that's an allowed situation. So I, I'm not crazy about it, but I think it's doable. And what about the brick patio, Jim? What's that?
That's coming out too.
Because that's an encroachment onto Mr. Fowley's property, I believe?
The shed, the patio, the fence, it's all coming down.
So, so if it's a family member, they certainly intend to fix this house up and do a nice job on it. I guess that's what I'm getting out of it.
Absolutely.
Okay, well, thanks, Jim. Anybody else?
I do.
All right, who else?
Otto.
Who else can be heard on this matter?
Keith Fowley.
All right, Keith, if you kindly raise your right hand and you swear to tell...
Yes, sir.
You swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth shall be gone.
I do.
State your name and your address.
My name is Ke, Keith Fowley, F-O-W-L-E-Y. And I live at fifty-eight Park Road, which is directly next door to seventy Park Road.
Gotcha. We read your letter, let's hear, let's hear it from you.
My main concern is the fellow that's been renting there, his name is Paul Parisi, he's been there about fifteen years. He has often told me how he can watch my television in my den when he doesn't feel like watching his own. That's how close it is already.
Well, he's out.
Without the addition of the six foot by twenty foot. That's my main concern that I do not want.
Well, obviously, he's out. New family coming in.
What's that?
He's out. There's a new family coming in, the Panchecks.
Yes, but I just don't want anybody, my privacy invaded to that point where it's seven and a half to eight foot off the line. I don't even know what the town code is. For the side yard, could you answer that for me?
Mr. DeLuca went over the side yard.
Well, in the, in the new zoning, the side yard, the side yard is... Seven and a half to eight foot. Is, is required as ten in the, in the, in the, in the code. It's ten.
Yes.
So at present, it's seven point five, which is pre-existing, not conforming. We're not increasing that, we're, we're not making it less than the seven point five. We're actually increasing it. And I was, I checked up there today just to see the, again, to the lay of the land, and the next-door neighbor's house has got to be forty feet away from the side yard, at least forty feet away from the side yard, and there's a bunch of trees there that are existing. So I, I don't... Which neighbor are you talking about, sir? To the right, as you face the house would be to the south. And the other one to the left, to the north, there's a driveway in between, and that's approximately almost forty feet away from the house. Well, then, my question would be, not that I'm for a second story, because again, the second story window would look right into my master bedroom.
Well, that's pretty common in areas that have non-conforming lots, when houses are built very close to each other. So I, I can understand your concern, but I, I don't know anything about the Pancheck situation, but they may be having a family or have a family. We're just going to have to, you know, try to live together as best you can.
Would it be possible if instead of them encroaching this way, if they built the extension that went to the house on the north side? And that wouldn't, that it wouldn't interfere with the driveway? No.
Yeah, that would...
It wouldn't have, I already looked at it, it's about eight foot, and you're only going out six. So it wouldn't interfere with the driveway. Yeah, you know, it does, it goes out, it, it, it starts interfering with, with the driveway and that area, and it, it, it makes the shape of the house real awkward. With all due respect, the shape is very awkward now. Well, not really, but... If you're going to redo it and you're an architect, I don't think there's a reasonable expectation that it couldn't go north, not affect my privacy, and resolve that problem. It's, no, I, I have to disagree with you. And to add to it, frankly, he could put a second story on that and still have windows facing towards you if we stayed in the same envelope. We'd rather not do that, but the windows would still, if we had windows, it'd still be on that side and we wouldn't have to even go for a board of appeals requirement if we stayed in the same envelope. So regardless of, of your concerns, he's allowed to put a second story on and have the windows as he wants in the, in the existing envelope. I mean, what I could try to do when we do the layout is try to eliminate, not eliminate, but, but put windows on that side that maybe doesn't, don't affect you to that great degree, but frankly, I, I don't really see the problem that you're trying to bring up. I'm trying to bring up the problem of privacy. I have a side lot on my house. You've, you've neglected to point out that you're dealing with about an eighth of an acre, and you want a eighteen-hundred square foot house, and you want a, a garage, which is five, three hundred forty-five square feet on that one-eighth of an acre with an eighteen-hundred square foot house. I think that's not reasonable. There's a lot of houses in the area that have similar or greater, and I've done some of them myself. Isn't there a three-story house across the street? Yes, there is. And the two stories just north of it? Yeah, there's a mammoth house over across the street. Mr. DeLuca... And then he has another yard. Yeah, but he doesn't utilize that, that has nothing to do with, 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 with the direction of site or anything. Matter of fact, I, I talked to that, the neighbor across the street. She called me up and I explained to her, and she says, oh, I have no problem with it, I'd rather see the, the, you know, she has no problem with it, she, that was it. Her name is Di, her name is Diane.
Yeah.
And the only reason she said that is because the Panchecks have never cleaned that house, leaves, painting, anything, since they rented it out fifteen years ago. That's why she has no problem with the tenant, who doesn't want to do it, because he's a tenant moving out. Well, I don't think that has anything to do with the issue. The bottom line is, I already can repeat what she said, I can't, you know, take third-hand... Well, I'm just clarifying, why she... Well, no, I, I just can't take, you know, third-hand information. I'm just telling you what she said to me, and she said it was fine, she had no problem with it, that was quoted, and that's all I can say.
Mr. DeLuca?
Yes.
Otto Whitmire.
Hi, how are you?
Very good. I'm looking at your survey, and existing lot coverage is thirty-four forty-nine. Proposed lot coverage is twenty-eight sixty-nine, which is a five hundred and eighty square feet less.
Yeah, the lot coverage is actually less.
Excuse me?
The lot coverage went from existing fifty-seven point four total, with the driveway and everything, to forty-seven point eight, so it actually decreased.
That's correct. Does he realize that?
Yeah, I don't understand it. If he's adding a garage, how did it get smaller? Because we eliminated asphalt, we eliminated wood decking. Which asphalt? In the, we eliminated the, excuse me, we eliminated the brick, the plastic shed, and the wood deck. Took it all out. Matter of fact, I think it's out. The wood deck, the wood deck was brought in by the renter. It doesn't matter, it was... Passed away. It was not a permanent structure. It is a permanent structure, when wood is on the ground, it's considered a permanent structure. It was on styrofoam. But it doesn't matter, it's still considered a permanent structure. It was a floating dock.
Gentlemen, please don't argue.
Mr. DeLuca? Frank Seabrook, how, how are you?
Hi, how are you?
Okay, I just, I can't recall the property line between your applicant and Mr. Fowley. Can you describe that to me?
Yeah, if you look at the house straight on.
Yeah.
The, the Fowleys to the south or to the right.
Right.
And if, and if you, if you're at, on the property line, he's got a Cape Cod house, I believe. Cape. If you look to the right, there's a, there's a driveway in between the, the south property line and subject property and his house, he has a driveway there. And it's approximately from, from the proposed extension to his existing house, it's approximately at least forty feet.
And then the other question I have is, can you describe to me the landscaping on your, your applicant's side? Is like, is it wooded, I, I can't recall.
Yes, yes, on the south side, there's a bunch of tall trees there.
Because recently, we just put a condition on a, on a, on an approval for evergreen, abreviady evergreen trees, and that would...
Well, well, I think the trees that are there are even better because they're probably at least forty, forty or fifty feet tall now. What they are is privet hedges that...
What they are is privet hedges that I don't know if I own or if Panchecks owns, and they're just overgrown string beans.
Well, I don't, I don't agree with that.
What's that?
I don't agree with that.
Well, you're wrong. I mean, someone would have to look at them, but you're wrong. Because Paul gave me per- permission to cut a couple of them down, but the way the line runs, the property line, I said, Paul, I don't know if these are mine or Pancheck's. So, he said, well, they're scaring my dog, can you cut some down? So, I did. But they're all overgrown, instead of being shaped so they, privet has a shape, or they just grow up to be skinny little trees. That's what's there now. I mean, there's some, I have some dogwoods on my side, but I don't even know where the property line runs, to be honest with you. And my survey was done by the former, uh, Joseph Ingenino.
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 Yeah, who would, who Nathan Taft Cohen the Third took after. I bought this house in two thousand, he never even showed me that they were infringing on my property in the back, on my survey.
I, I can't speak for him.
I can't either, but I'm just saying, I don't know what's going on, but I can't even tell to this day. If, I'd appreciate it if someone would put a marker back there to show me where my property ends and yours starts.
Well, that's not an issue, yeah.
This variance is about setbacks, not trees or markers.
So, the.
Okay, well, the main thing is, I just don't want the house closed. It started off as a six hundred and fifty-foot bungalow with screened-in porch. I don't even know if the addition that's on there was done with the permit or not, and now they wanna extend it up the whole side of the house.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Yeah, um, so he is moving, or, or actually removing the existing patio that's on your property.
Yeah, that's just a couple of small bricks.
Right, but how would you feel about, about Arbevadi's put in between, uh, his house and the property line?
No, I don't agree.
With the windows on.
Okay.
Gentlemen, can I ask you, just north of, of the, this proposal.
I just don't like the windows.
Can I just say something, Ralph Gazillo, it, it just north of it, I believe it's the Roushes', is that a two-family also, a two-story also?
Excuse me?
Just to the facing your house, besides thi- this house, the next one up, I think it's the Roushes', is that a two-story also?
Yes, it isn't Roush anymore, a fellow moved in there named Roland.
All right, but is that a two-story also?
No, it's like, it's the same footprint, basically, as Pancheck's.
No, but is it two-story or one-story?
One.
And, all right, just opposite that, which would be north of that house that's across the street, is that a two-story also?
Or the one north of that?
The, the, the house across the street is three stories plus a basement, I believe. And just north of that, across the street from that, is that also a two-story?
You got what, I'm not following which side you're talking about.
When you walk out your door, to your right.
Yeah.
All right, there's a street, correct?
Park Road, yes.
All right. No, no, not, no.
South Drive.
South Drive, South, South Drive, on the other side of that street, is there a two-story house there also?
Yeah, Panchecks own that one too, and the one next door.
Okay.
But the one directly behind me is a ranch, and the one that Taddy Corners, the mine, is a ranch. He just went before you guys to get a permit to raise it, he's not gonna do it, and they're all ranches along that whole center drive. The only two exceptions are the Panchecks.
All right.
But they have much bigger lots over there. This whole section of Reeves Park was bought by Stephen Grotsky, the chief of police for forty years. And he doled it out to his family members. The original builder of this house was Mike Chazinsty, and he could have even built Pancheck's house in the one next one. He worked at Mid Island Lumber, he died about nineteen ninety-three, and uh, I don't know, it seems like I'm talking in circles.
All right, all right, yeah, we are, we're all talking in circles. I'll tell you what, we're gonna make this as a reserve decision for the next meeting. So, uh, let's move on, any, anyone else have anything else to say?
I just firmly don't want that one extension put over to me, I'd like if you're gonna blow the house out, blow it out to the north.
Okay.
That ain't gonna happen.
All right, let's hear it, let's move on, who's, who's got the.
What's the next meeting date, sir?
Be September, uh. Tenth.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I moved at the appeal number twenty twenty dash zero twenty-four, Patricia Pancheck, the, uh, reserved decision, uh, on September tenth.
And I'd like to point out, if you continue up South Drive, past one of the Panchecks where the daughter, the other daughter lives, it's a son, a daughter, a divorced daughter, but if you go all the way up South Drive, they're all single-story ranches.
All right.
We have a second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a second, all right, Mr. Whitmire.
Hi.
Mr. Barnes.
Hi.
Mr. Gazillo.
Hi.
Mr. Seabrook.
Hi.
And I vote aye, so we'll have a decision on that page. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Carissa.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Will this be, will I be notified?
You can tune in, next meeting.
When is that scheduled, sir?
September tenth.
Thank you very much.
You're quite welcome, good evening.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appeal twenty twenty twenty-five, Riverhead Retail Partners LLC, two thirty, uh, two forty-three, two forty-five West Main Street, Riverhead, tax map number six hundred one twenty-eight three fifty and fifty-one, PRC zoning for variances and or relief from chapter three oh one, section two sixty A, where gooseneck lighting is proposed to be mounted at nineteen point one seven feet to illuminate clock on building tower and luminaires exclusive of municipal street lighting and municipal recreation fields shall be mounted no higher than sixteen feet from the level ground to the lowest light emitting part of the fixture.
All right, who's, who's up for this one?
Uh, Keith Archer, good morning, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members.
All right, kindly raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth shall be God.
Of course, thank you, yes.
State your name and your address.
Keith Archer, four forty-five Broad Hall Road, Melville, New York, and, uh, also tuned in is Eric Mine from, uh, Bowler Engineering.
All right, kindly raise your, your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth shall be God.
I do.
All right, thank you. Name, your name and your address.
Eric Mine, Bowler, twenty-nine twenty-nine Expressway Drive North, Hop Dog, New York, one one seven four nine.
All right, gentlemen, you have a floor, state your ta- state your address.
One other, Mr. Chairman, and that is Rowan Paznow, who is the owner and the developer of the house.
Well, if he wants to testify, we'll swear him in at the time. How's that?
Thank you. Uh, so we're here tonight after going through a rather lengthy process, we've actually been to the board before, uh, on this property. If you recall, the applicant's proposal is to construct a three thousand seventy-five square foot, uh, retail store, which will be a seven eleven. Um, we spent the last, hmm, almost two years, uh, going through site plan review, um, with the planning board. And during that process, there were several different, um, iterations of building elevations that were discussed, considered, uh, since the property is in an historic district, um, it's on the, uh, as you know, it's on the south side of Main Street, between Conic and Osborne Avenue, which is the town's historic district. And what ultimately was agreed upon, Mr. Chairman, was, um, the elevation, which I believe you have before you, I know we sent it to Carissa a little earlier, just in case you didn't have it, uh, which included a clock tower. And this was actually, um, an iteration that was recommended by, I believe it was the ARB early on. Uh, and the, uh, planning board requested that the clock be illuminated. So, your code doesn't permit illumination, um, above the sixteen-foot level. So, when you just measure the top of the clock, um, it's nineteen feet two inches. Um, and, uh, we proposed a gooseneck light, which was, we requested by the planning board. Uh, and this was actually approved by the planning board with the knowledge that we would be coming and visiting, um, the zoning board of appeals requesting this variance. The, uh, site plan has been approved by the planning board, um, and actually, uh, some, uh, building permits have been issued, um, and there has been some work commenced on the site. So, we're really here to get your approval and your variance, uh, with respect to the gooseneck light that's gonna be above the clock that was requested, uh, by the planning board.
And the clock is sixteen feet, is that correct?
Eric, is that, is that correct?
Why can't the clock be illuminated from the inside?
Not allowed.
Not allowed, and it can't be uplit either.
That's good, uh, at least you know that code, okay.
Catch twenty-two.
We wanted to.
I don't see any problem.
I don't see any problem in it either, thank you, Mr. Barnes.
Is there anyone else to be heard on this issue? All right, let's get to it.
Okay, well, Mr. Chairman, I moved at the appeal of Riverhead Retail Partners LLC, um, which is, uh, located at twenty, uh, two forty-three, two forty-five West Main Street, for variances and relief from chapter three oh one, two sixty A, where the gooseneck lighting is proposed to be mounted at nineteen point one seven feet to illuminate clock on building tower and luminaries exclusive of municipal street lighting and municipal recreation field shall be mounted no higher than sixteen feet from level ground to the lowest light emitting part of the fixture. Be approved in accordance with the application then sketches with amendments there too, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
Second?
All right, Mr. Whitmire.
Hi.
Mr. Barnes.
Hi.
Mr. Gazillo.
Hi.
Mr. Seabrook.
Hi.
I vote aye. Your appeal's been granted, and hopefully you don't have to go through any more trials and tribulations and get the place built, and off you go.
Thank you, it's taken a while, but, uh, we're just about there, but thank you so much.
You know, can I make us a point? If you, in the future, during this project, find that you need another variance, it doesn't necessarily mean you have to make a new application. You can come to us and ask us to reopen this hearing and add to this application to lessen the paperwork.
I appreciate that, guys.
You got it, have a good night.
Good night, folks.
Thank you, thank you. Good luck.
Thank you, lady, you're off. And, oh, running.
Appeal twenty twenty twenty-three, eighteen forty-six Edwards Avenue LLC, eighteen forty-six Edwards Avenue, Calverton, tax map number six hundred thirty-nine two seventeen, RA forty zoning for variances and or relief from chapter three oh one, section eleven, where proposed impervious surface coverage is thirty-five point one percent and maximum permitted is fifteen percent, where front yard setback is four point five feet and minimum required is thirty-five feet, where proposed side yard setback is four point nine feet and minimum required is twenty-five feet, and where proposed rear yard setback is zero point three feet and minimum required is sixty feet.
All right, Counselor, you're on.
Good evening, gentlemen, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for hearing this appeal, I represent, uh, the Broces. I believe this may be a case of first impression, but I don't know, I guess you'll tell me. Uh, the whole purpose of this application, uh, Mr. Broces is in a wheelchair, and in order for him to access his beach and his property, he needs to put decks around the entire property. So, the, uh, property will be renovated with a, a, an elevator, uh, from the ground floor up to the top floor, and decks will be put around the property so that he could access the beach, much the way you and I would access the beach or the edges of our property. Uh, it seems, uh, like, it may seem like a substantial variance, but given the circumstances, I don't believe that it is. Uh, we have letters of support from the two adjoining property owners, uh, and, um, we have a New York State DEC wetlands permit in place, and, uh, that took two years to get. And we have an application into the planning board for a chapter two nineteen permit, which I do believe you, uh, have seen the SECR review of, and hopefully, by the end of today, we'll have, uh, ZBA approval, if the board is so inclined, and we can move forward with the two nineteen permit. Uh, I don't have anything else to add.
Counselor, can you tell me why, why, why is he wheelchair bound?
Uh, he had a car accident, uh, several years ago, he was, uh, rear-ended, uh, while he was sitting on the side of the road, um, talk, doing what he's supposed to do, uh, pulled over to take a cell phone call, and, uh, was rear-ended, and that's left him in a wheelchair.
Okay.
Sorry to hear that.
We all are. Having us on this wheelchair bound, I certainly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Any of the board members have any problems?
Is anybody on the phone? Is anybody waiting in the.
All right, anybody waiting on, uh, let's, let's hear it.
Who's all these other people holding? Does anybody else wanna speak? If you do, unmute your button now. So then, Mr. Chairman, I guess.
Dave Wesner? Jeff? Arwin?
That could be my client.
No. All right, let's move on. Let's go.
Okay, Jeff, you there?
Yes, I don't, this is Jeff, it's, it's actually, uh, my home, Sean Walters representing me, so I appreciate you guys taking the time.
All right, Jeff, kindly raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth shall be God.
Yes, I do.
Just state your name and your address.
Uh, Jeff Brozey, eighteen forty-six Edwards Avenue, Bating Hall, New York.
Okay.
So, he really doesn't wanna say anything, I think.
You wish to be heard, you're respected, yes?
I don't think he wants to add anything, do you, Jeff?
No, thank you, I appreciate you helping.
Okay, well, sorry for your troubles, Jeff, that's, uh, unfortunate.
Thank you.
Anyone else to be heard? Okay, then we have, uh, let's have a reading.
I, I moved at the appeal of eighteen forty-six Edwards Avenue LLC, dash eighteen forty-six Edwards Avenue, Calverton, dash SCTM number six hundred dash three nine dash two dash seventeen dash RA four zero zoning for variances and or relief from chapter three oh one, section eleven, where proposed impervious surface coverage is thirty-five point one percent and maximum permitted is fifteen percent, where front yard setback is four point five feet and minimum required is thirty-five feet, where proposed sides, side yard setback is four point nine feet and minimum required is twenty-five feet, and where proposed rear yard setback is point, uh, zero point three feet and minimum required is sixty feet, be approved in accordance with the applications and sketches and amendments there too, if any, as filed by the building inspector.
Second?
Mr. Whitmire.
Hi.
Mr. Barnes.
Hi.
Mr. Gazillo.
Hi.
Mr. Seabrook.
Hi.
And I vote aye. So, uh, God bless, uh, sorry for your troubles, and you have a great evening.
Have a great evening.
All right.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
So, I hear a motion to accept the meeting, the, uh, minutes of the last meeting.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, I hear a motion to adjourn.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all, thank you very much.